Uh, now I'm thinking of the word, um, our trash cans. What do we call our trash cans these days?
Although the Committee for Roll Cart Choice.
Right.
We worked on that campaign together.
That was great to work with them and we now finally have them. Um, and soon hopefully we'll get back recycling. But that's another question. Um, I actually thought Mike could really speak about his background and I don't want to take any extra time than that, but it's been great to know Mike and I'm really interested in hearing about his book and a little bit also about, um, the pack that he works with. So I'll let you speak now, Mike. Thanks for being here today. Really excited.
Thank you. Thank you, Alice. Uh, I'm gonna do a couple of things. I'm gonna, I think you all probably know me. I've been a long time, uh, guest of the Mule Skinner since March of 2012 was probably when I met the bulk of you when I was candidate for, uh, Second Ward City Council. I did serve three terms, so I served from 2012 to, uh, 2021. To get y'all caught up to what happened then, um, I was sent into exile after my, my nine years of city council service, uh, by creating conflicts of interest with all the social service providers in the city. So I made myself a little bit unemployable. So I did a regional job search and I took a job, um, running a domestic violence and sexual assault center here in Leavenworth, Kansas. And I did that for two years. Uh, my board of directors were all Trumpists and I pride myself on being able to work with anyone. And I did, and I was successfully advanced the cause of the organization, but I also realized that I would, did not want to stay beyond my two-year commitment. So I, uh, saved my money and I took a, a, an epic road trip and I took most of 2024 off and I, and I wrote a book and, uh, the, uh, the book is called The Practical Guide to Building a Better World and it's a, uh, it's a, uh, memoir-driven how-to, um, that, that goes into, um, nine different strategies for social, uh, and environmental change. And it begins with, um, how to live a sustainable and justice-oriented lifestyle. And then, uh, it moves into how to organize a protest. I was a, uh, direct action, correct, uh, radical, uh, organizer in my youth and, uh, so I'm dusting off that skillset with the changed world that we live in now. Uh, but I'll get to that. And so it has a chapter on how to organize a protest. It has a chapter on how to be effective in social services and gets into some basic, the counseling and case management skillsets that can be useful for everybody, both trying to help people and trying to build relationships. Um, moves into a chapter on nonprofit management, how to professionalize and build organizations, which has been really helpful when I've met with, uh, uh, like the, the demo, the Boone County Democratic, um, Committee, the, the, the executive committee to, uh, talk about how to build up that organization. So there's some organizational analysis, some strategic planning, those kinds of things. Um, there's a chapter on how to run for office, uh, specifically local office, but it's a little bit broader than that. And then a chapter on how to govern when you win. Uh, there's a chapter on how to start your own business. I was one of the founders with my brother John of Foray Change, uh, which I believe is the only, um, for-profit homeless outreach business in the country. Um, and, uh, and then, uh, the, the, the final chapter is on, uh, organizing anarchist mutual aid projects. And I get into the, the COVID organizing where, um, the, the Como Crisis Shelter projects and Car Camp and the Safe Camps and the stuff that we did during COVID is kind of the, the finale. Uh, so in the process of writing the book, um, I made some connections with some, um, established political organizers who are here in Kansas. And we decided they, I was offered to be involved with a political action committee. And so we formed the New American Community as a hybrid PAC. Um, we have a, we have two accounts. We have an unlimited account and, uh, and then we have, uh, a, a limited account, like a super PAC and then a regular PAC. And we're a federal PAC, but we're primarily focused on local organizing and that was kind of, uh, uh, to support local organizing. And today, what I'm going to talk about, because I am going to go broadly philosophical and then I'm going to move into the activism that I'm, that I'm doing. Uh, so sorry, I had a, had a, had a, where am I going to go with this? So the New American Community, uh, were formed here in Leavenworth and we're doing a couple of different projects. We're doing a, uh, Democratic Party Organization Community Organizing Project. We have a survey. We've surveyed, we sent surveys to all the county party organizations across the country. We've gotten about 200 of them back. And so we've been analyzing that survey and then we've also been putting up, uh, uh, learn articles based on the training needs that people have identified. And so on, in the chat, I put in and Dave shared again, the preorder form for the book and then also the New American Community, which has a learn page. If you did have, if you see learning articles that would be helpful and, uh, and, and you don't see what you need there, let me know and we'll, we'll craft that material and put that, that up there. As I get into doing the book tour later this summer, um, I'll start doing more in real life kind of speeches and trainings and try to, to do more practical, um, skill training. So the, that, the other thing that the American community is doing, and I'm going to get back to this and jump in into some detail, is we're also supporting activist activity, local activism. And, uh, and that kind of gets into, let me just move into my prepared remarks. I'm going to talk a little bit and then I'm gonna, uh, you know, before I get into that, let me, let me read you the, since this is a, I'm new to this book promotion thing, I want to read you the, I want to read you a little bit of the introduction. I should have books here within a week or two. And, uh, so if there's no date listed on the preorder, because my publisher wants to under-promise and over-deliver, but, um, books should deliver, um, next month. So I'm going to break, read you from the introduction of the Practical Guide. "We have enough freedom and resources to live in a better world. Unfortunately, we're not building it. This fact remains true even with the assault on democracy, the rule of law, good governance, and even truth itself by Donald Trump and his Project 2025 minions. The risks have increased, especially for those without citizenship, but organizing opportunities abound. The defiance of court rulings, the seizure of Congress's power of the purse, the increasingly authoritarian tone in actions of the powers that be are ominous and disturbing. The slide into authoritarianism is also a clarion call for action. The disruption of federal assistance programs creates an immediate need for more effective local social services and mutual aid initiatives. The need to prepare for mass mobilization is clear even to those firmly rooted in electoral politics. And yet electoral politics has become even more critical to support pro-democracy candidates to retake the reins of political power before it is too late. Even in this time of rapid change and maximum information, as they flood the zone, we are pushed into a very narrow range of options that are rooted in and sustain the status quo. Making a life becomes meaner and harder on those without abundant resources. Even within the existent economic and social structures, there is far more room to innovate and promote positive change than is generally believed to put into practice. I have made myself a student of personal and societal transformation. I found ways that I can not only live my best life, but also bend reality to better conform with my hopes and dreams for a safer and more just world for all of us. As Martin Luther King Jr. said, "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends toward justice." I would add, "The arc doesn't bend itself." This book documents some of the lessons I have learned as an agent of change in a variety of fields, seeking to bend the arc towards justice. It is not an exhaustive list of ways to change the world, just the ones I have found most helpful. I no longer believe in a grand solution, but there are thousands of small solutions that promote justice and sustainability. This guide shares my story presenting lessons learned in practical guidelines to get started on change-making and improving the chances for success. It is my hope that this volume inspires the reader to identify their own ways to make positive change and then get out there and do it. I like plans that start today, the only true time of action. As you read this book, if you see a step you haven't taken that makes sense for you, put the book down and take it today, right now." Uh, I'm going to leave it at that. Um, so I'm proud. I wish I would have written an easier book to read. It's 340 pages long. Um, I had put a, uh, maximum of 180, but, uh, uh, I would have needed another year to write a shorter book. There's a famous quote, "I would have written you a shorter letter if I had more time." Um, both my need to, um, move into bringing in income as I've depleted my savings through this process. Uh, and then the political events on the ground. I feel a sense of urgency in the book and it's very timely. I wrote it before Trump became president, but I had editing, the publishing process has been slower and so I was able to, um, update it to the current situation. At first I was a little disappointed with that because it was some difficult things to kind of revisit from a different perspective. But I feel like, uh, anything that was written before Trump might have become instantly dated, you know? And that's, that's, I'm going to move into some, some, uh, more prepared remarks about localism. So let me say this. After writing a book on winning elections, governance and advocacy, I first need to make clear that my approach to politics is fundamentally different from most of what you hear. Almost all political discourse in the U.S. is around state and national issues based around a right-left dichotomy. Worse, the political discourse is heavily focused on horse race considerations more than substantive policy discussions. Rhetoric and soundbites play well on social media and cable news and politicians today exist who only have a political strategy and no strategy at all for governance. As a longtime grassroots activist with a focus on building community with an anarchist heart and an ecologist's focus on the bio-region, I had a fundamentally different approach to politics. When I ran for city council, my focus was not on pursuing any ideological victories or building a political platform for future political advancement. When I was thinking about running, I asked the why question. As a candidate, I would run on my values, because I didn't really know that much about how the city worked when I first ran. Um, but if I won, I committed myself to a governance agenda that recognized my fiduciary responsibility to the city as an organization. That's a placeholder for long-term capacity to ensure resident services. You know, we have to look after the, the financial health of the city. It's not something that a progressive immediately jumps to, especially one with anarchist roots, but it made sense to me and it still does. I also committed myself to the care and wellbeing of the 1,400 or so employees, even the ones who don't like me, you know, the, the Columbia Police, uh, Officers Association still makes a project and, uh, and, and beat me up periodically. Um, but I still wanted to look after them as our employees. I also decided that the concrete, sometimes literal, facts on the ground are more important than the more ephemeral things like a political career or like people's feelings about how the city developed. Um, I took a lot of grief as a local policymaker by being more influenced by the facts on the ground than, than the politics of the matter or, or people's preferences. Um, my focus on good government challenged me to respect city policies and internal capacity and to focus on regular improvements and long-term planning. I long argue that as much attention we place on state and federal issues, it's local government that matters the most. Local governments operate utilities, electric, water, sewer, solid waste, deliver public safety, uh, with police fire in the courts. We guide and facilitate economic development, pass local laws, make land use decisions and more. From what it takes in taxes, fees and other revenue compared to what it delivers, local government is the best value in politics. Politics even takes its name from polis, the Greek word which means city. All these points are well and good, but what do they mean in an age of rising authoritarianism? You know, what does small-town values and local government do when we are faced with, um, the disregard for the law, the unconstitutional actions and the threats that we have of moving towards true tyranny? Uh, they mean everything because an authoritarian agenda needs all levels of government to control the people and fulfill its awful purpose. The, one of the real strengths of America is our system of decentralized power and local control. From voting to education to policing to land use, the patchwork of local systems that make up most of our governance systems serves as a check and balance from any group asserting a national governance agenda. And there is a group, a small group of people, um, who are asserting, I don't have to tell you about Project 2025 and the ideological agenda that they're trying to approach, but we are resilient and robust because we are localized and, and that decentralized approach is our strength and our, I think our salvation. So what I'm approaching, because I also have like, what should we be doing in this time? And I have thought deeply about this because I've had the time and the space to do so. And I have, I'm putting, I'm proposing an approach that I call localism. And it tells us to defer on national ideological agendas. When we're talking about what do the Democrats have to do to re-message, there is no overall democratic message that we need to embrace. Instead, we need to look at our own local conditions to inform our path of building long-term progressive change and protecting freedom and democracy. So in Leavenworth, Kansas, mostly where I hang my hat, um, stopping CoreCivic from reopening their troubled detention facility as an ICE deportation center presents as an obvious issue to rally around. So rather than talk about ICE and deportation regime, um, just to get you caught up with our local struggle, in Leavenworth, there was a private prison provider, the second largest private prison provider, uh, called CoreCivic. And they are, uh, they closed down in 2021 when President Biden offered an executive order that stopped new contracts for private prisons. And they had a deplorable safety record. They've run 25% of their vacancies open. Um, there's been staff assaults and inmate suicides and, and murders that were not adequately done. They didn't cooperate with the local police. They had grinder failures that led to sanitary sewer overflows. You may remember those from the issues with sewer in downtown Columbia, the poop fountains when you have manholes blowing up. So they've, they've been disrespectful of the community process and they ran roughshod over local community. So when they closed down, um, you know, Leavenworth had passed zoning laws that required correctional facilities to have a special use permit to operate on industrial zone land as their facility is. So when they were closed for 36 months, they lost their grandfathered status for their permit and they needed to go through that permit process again. Um, but CoreCivic has announced that they don't, that they don't need that permit and they're going to open without it. And so our campaign was to pressure the Leavenworth City Government to take legal action to defend their right to regulate land use through the special use permit. They filed in federal court and it was thrown out on procedural grounds under that it should have went to state court and they've refiled in state court. And so, uh, they are moving to open next week and the court hearing will be next week. And it's kind of a horse race to see if they're going to be able to open up before there gets to be a state injunction. And so as we've worked on this issue, most of the big heavyweights are behind it are immigration organizations, um, the ACLU and people who have a very left-wing political agenda about stopping Trump's deportation agenda. But as we talk about the campaign in social media and with our local elected officials and in media interviews, we're highlighting that this is a local land use issue that is not a political issue. It's asking everybody to abide by the same laws because the political coalition that opposes CoreCivic includes all of the folks who oppose the, uh, ICE, uh, mass deportation agenda and all the illegality and constitutional issues that go along with that. But it also includes some Trump voters, you know, if we just, uh, someone once told me an issue was coming up and they said, "We gotta get all the good people out to vote for that." And I said, "Oh, we're going to need more than that if we want to win." You know, because in Leavenworth, it's probably 60-40 Republican-Democrats. Um, but the moderate, non-Trumpist Republicans make common cause here with the Republicans and we have a governance majority, at least in the city of Leavenworth, with three liberals and two conservatives. But even the two conservatives who I'm sure voted for Trump and are supportive of the mass deportation agenda, they signed on to this lawsuit because they recognize the importance of local land use laws and corporations not being, um, unaccountable to what's going on. So, um, so as we've built this coalition, we're careful to highlight the messaging that resonates with most of the people in the community, um, that's going to allow us to win this issue. And I call this localism because, um, this is a specific issue. If this issue was not in front of us, then the next big issue would be cuts to the VA because Leavenworth is, probably has one of the highest, um, ratios of veterans to non-military people in the country. And that VA cuts very much hit home. Even a lot of conservatives were very concerned about what DoSh was doing. It's also hitting the contract system and, and things like that. So what I encourage is what we need to do, if I was a candidate running for office, I would look at the needs of the people in my district and I would hyper-focus, only talk about my political agenda that's going to improve the practical lives of working class and struggling people within my district. And I would steer clear of larger political narratives that are not going to resonate with the practical lives of the people that we want to help. So as we work on this specific issue, we strengthen our alliances, our individual and collective capacity and the belief in the community that they can make a difference. My Trump-voting, social media folks who are opposed to CoreCivic, I'm starting to see them shift. I'm starting to see them share other stories about ICE's abuses. And folks who, um, first became agitated on this issue, um, didn't want the detention facility because they were afraid that detainees would be released into our community and increase the immigrant population. But as they've become galvanized in our fight against this terrible corporation and have learned the facts, they've become more open-minded about the issues of immigration. And so, you know, this is something that we loo, that I, that I highlight a lot in the book, but if we want to change, because, you know, if we want to win in Missouri and Kansas, we have to change hearts and minds. We have to do this with not just activating our political base, but we have to persuade and, and, and change people to change beliefs and political ideology and voting behavior. And that change comes through the process of relationship and engagement. So as we battle, you know, this slide into authoritarianism, we also have to remember that we need 50% plus one of the voters. And so we're going to need some people who voted for Trump to vote another way. You know, we're going to need people who have been voting for the Republican, um, to, to begin voting for Democrats. And so that means we can't categorically denounce and, and, and blame and, and do things that are not helpful. We need a future focus of what we want people to do, not a lot of scalding and, and attacks about what people have done in the past. So we're building our collective capacity and belief that we can make a difference. Having a deep knowledge of local processes, relationships with the local power structure and the unique political pressure points for local actors can help guide our messaging and approach. Um, I'm, you know, I'm relatively new. I'm, I'm relatively new to Leavenworth, but I've still been helpful because I understand how city government works. I understand permitting processes and zoning laws. And I also understand the political pressures that are going to, um, move our local elected, elected officials. So I want to jump into David or Carol's question about by focusing on localism, doesn't it sound like you're ignoring the national issues? So there's very, you know, if I was the Chair of the Democratic National Committee, I would be promoting localism by talking to all the candidates to talk about what's going to do well in their, in their local areas. And that national agenda should bubble up from, from the top. Um, but as we do political messaging, um, we want to focus on what's going to mean something to our own particular electorate. So I think there's national party organization, but it's less than a top-down, this is our platform and people need to get on it, that we need ideological purity or litmus tests about beliefs, but I think we need to have a big tent and anybody who wants to work for us, work with us, um, you know, we should embrace. Uh, I take a, a, a nonpartisan approach. Other projects that the, the New American Community is working on is promoting and facilitating what we're calling a pro-democracy alliance, which includes everybody who believes in civility and the rule of law. You know, it's just that basic, you know, because there's so many people, you know, who don't at this point that have, uh, you know, that have embraced lawlessness and have, um, taken a, a, a sharp corner. Um, so as, if I was advising local candidates, uh, congressional candidates, then I would focus, you know, in Missouri, I'd focus on rural hospitals. I would focus on healthcare. I would focus on the gap between what it costs to make a living and what it costs to, um, and how much people can earn and how to address that gap. We need to both lift wages and we both need to reduce costs, especially things around housing, that there's some natural reform agenda there. So that's what I would, I would focus on. I think there's still a need for a national democratic party. And when a president candidate emerged and takes on those, when we get in, you know, 2026, local, we should be all in on localism and there should be, um, the, the unifying struggle, the unifying theme is that the, 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 the Project 2025 agenda has decimated our local community and everybody's going to have their best examples of what that means and who's going to resonate those audiences that are going to bring the voters that they need to do. And so we want to look at building a political coalition that's a majority coalition. And that's, you know, because what we're doing is we're losing the, the working class. When we get into talking about political issues, um, how we deal with immigration on a larger level, I mean, if, you know, Trump, you know, we've been getting beat up on immigration, you know, as Democrats get labeled as a party for open borders. And, you know, I'm a proud believer in open borders from my anarchist, um, tradition. So I'm not against that, but I'm like, when we talk about political messaging, political messaging is like a resume. We're asking the American people to give us a job. You know, our candidates, our party, the offices and things that we try to get. And so we want to tell the parts of the story, what we want to put on our resume is the parts of the story that's going to allow people to vote for us. And so we want to talk about the largest common agenda that we can honestly believe in and support, but that also is going to bring enough people together to win the election or build towards that by building long-term capacity, educating people, creating more voters per age, swaying more voters and begin bending that needle. You know, because we're going to need, you know, the blue places are going to have to win their, but win their big margins, but if we can reduce the losing margins in the big red and rural areas. And, uh, the New American Community is primarily focused on areas where the Democratic Party is not strong. So what we're talking about, you know, I'm slipped into talking about winning elections in two years. But if you are, if I'm talking to a county party organization in a very rural area, um, you know, that's galvanizing people to get into election where last time you lost 70-30 and organizing every two years to, to, to lose an election, that's a tough way to organize. So as we're talking to, to Democratic Party organizations in hard-to-win areas, we're suggesting that they might want to take some other approaches beside electoral politics. Maybe Democratic Party organizations can be something more like a, uh, a community betterment organization where they have some kind of, they can do some charity actions that can help people's immediate, there could be mutual aid projects that could be organized out of the Democratic Party office. There's also protest and direct action level kind of, you know, where like what you all are doing every Saturday to hold the legislators accountable for not meeting with their constituents. That's the kind of activity that can build capacity because then you get smaller victories that can help build the brand. And then we also need to get out into more media spaces. If you look at the New American Community page, um, we put up our first podcast. It's on CoreCivic. So you can find out more about that campaign. I, uh, interview, uh, an activist who, uh, is a former, uh, corrections officer at CoreCivic for five years about his experiences and, and the campaign to shut that facility down. And that has been a great builder. It's been embraced by the Democratic Party, but it's bigger than that. Um, and it, it, the energy and enthusiasm is gonna, is gonna help. Uh, when we have June 6th, uh, the Indivisible Rally, the local one that's here, um, I'm going to be at that rally speaking about the CoreCivic campaign. So probably the most important thing that we're doing with the CoreCivic campaign is we're manualizing our approach. We're putting together, um, materials so that people, that other folks who are placed with ICE detention facilities, if the big beautiful reconciliation bill passes, there's going to be a tons more money dumped into ICE detention facilities. And they're going to look to their private prison provider partners to open up new facilities. And so we plan on taking what we've learned from this fight and manualizing that and helping other local communities, um, slow down and stop this process um, by supporting their local campaigns. Uh, we call ourselves the CoreCivic Organizing Group, our local group, uh, because we're a cog and we hope to form other cogs. We've connected with the advocates in their home state of Tennessee, um, who have long been opposed to CoreCivic and we're supporting their efforts. And so we're in that process of growing from the bottom. And so localism is about having a national agenda, but it's having a national agenda that percolates up from the bottom. And there are some things that are going to resonate almost everywhere, but you know, rural places should be howling about rural hospitals closing. The big cities, you know, not so much. Um, you know, the hospitals, Columbia is going to be fine because you are a hospital mecca. The closing of rural hospitals might touch liberals' hearts, but people who rely on, People who are not our ideological mates. Will s- will be more stuck, those who rely on rural hospitals, that message is gonna resonate with them in a way. That it only resonates with us because we think it's the right thing to do. And that it's good policy because it's the right thing to do and it's good policy. Um, so those are my prepared remarks, a snippet from the book. Um, I'll open it up to uh questions and discussion.
Do you see um? People's hands when they come up, Mike? Uh, do you wanna field your own questions?
I don't, I only have, let me see if I can get everybody on.
Well, it doesn't matter. I can look for the questions for it. In the meantime, while you're while you're looking around. I'll I'll do what I failed to do in the beginning. Uh, we like at our meetings to introduce uh current office holders. And we are honored to have Jenna Riddell, a good friend of the group with us today. And we also have one uh candidate for office, uh Ken Rice, who is running for school board soon. So welcome. I don't think we have any members of the of the press here, but I hope that they will notice your.
Yeah, David, I'm I'm running for uh second ward.
Ah, second ward, I'm sorry.
Uh, you you were correct. Uh, a few months ago, I did run for school board. Um, but uh, y- yes, I am currently uh running for uh second ward for the special election on August uh fifth.
Okay, and I do believe we're working on um uh getting a forum for you and possibly uh one of your opponents. Uh, one of our future meetings. So good to see you here, Ken. Do you have any questions for our our um?
It's a great forum. Radal, Limes with Ladle, thanks for uh, nice to meet you. Uh. Video, I certainly see a lot of uh Jenna's stuff uh on social media, but I I've not met her, so nice to meet you today.
Nice to meet you as well.
Ken, thanks for stepping up. I'm glad to see you. Competitive elections, I think that helps. And I hope the election stays positive. We've had a series of po- every, since my first election, they've, the elections have stayed pretty positive. And turnout has been low, but it is rising. Uh, I was elected on a seven percent turnover rate election. And then the last second word election, it was up to fourteen percent. It rose steadily uh the three times that I ran. Um, except for Paul Love's second race, they've all been positive. He went really negative uh. Uh, that time, but he did activate, he did activate a lot of folks.
I I will say, Mike, um um, thank you for that. And um, yes, uh, so I reached out. Um, we have a mutual friend in Jackie St- Stample. Um, and um, my opponent Vera Elwood, uh, we we both already met and we agreed that. You know, we're gonna talk about our ideologies and and try to win the voters. And certainly we are, our close circle will not do any type of uh things that happened in the latest um. Mayoriel race, uh, because we found, we both found it quite disgusting. And um, you know, and then at the end, whoever wins, uh, we're we're, you know, we said that we'll congratulate each other. And then be able to stay open to listening to each other because at the end of the day, everyone's uh ideas are important. And we need to be having open and to what you said uh about your book, we have to have a big um. Uh, open way and we gotta listen to all voices because. The divisiveness that's going on in the world right now is uh what's tearing us apart. Um, though.
Yeah, yeah, Ken, let me respond to that and then I want to come to David Robinson's type question in the chat. Uh. I ran in twenty twelve and I pulled the entire voting list and I did not. Filtered by political ideology and. And I talked, cause I was running on sidewalks and I could pitch sidewalks to the right and to the left. Remember back in the days when we when we used to, before we had garage door openers and we used to sit on our front porch and we'd have eyes on the street. And we knew our neighbors and we cared about what was going on. And the best way to prevent crime, which is mostly kind of nuisance crimes, is to have more eyes on the street by having a front yard experience versus the back deck experience. So when I talk to sidewalks, I would hearken back to those old days of Mayberry. And when I talk to to liberals, um, you know, everybody who doesn't have a sidewalk, you just talk about, boy, wouldn't it be great if you had a sidewalk and they're like, oh, yeah. But people who got sidewalks, that's the art of politics. And for the conservatives, I would hearken back to this community. Of when we used to be close and we had a greater sense of community, much as conservatives generally do. Um, but talking about sidewalks. And then when I was talking to liberals. I would say, boy, you got a great sidewalk. Wouldn't it be great if some of our older neighborhoods that got built in the fifties and sixties and we thought everyone would drive everywhere? Wouldn't it be great if they had sidewalks too? Cause that message resonates with the left, but not so much with the right.
Sure.
Uh, I do want to jump to, cause it's Democrat, this is Democrat, so I want to stay in the Democrat, although uh, New American Community is nonpartisan. We also have a Republican labor uh component to the work that we're doing. It's in, it's a nascent form. We don't want to under. We're far primarily funded by Democratic donors and we want to honor that. But we believe that if the working, if the Republican Party is gonna win working class votes, they ought to have a working class agenda. And uh, that they ought to be able to support workers' rights and things that are gonna help the the. Be working people uh of of America. So David Robinson points out that the Republicans gained power, did not gain power through localism. But that they champion, they that that's starting with Newt Gingrich, there's this kind of demonizing of our enemies. There's a media, there's a media that goes along with Fox News and became right, there's a right wing media ecosystem. That does not have its uh correlate in the left, you know, and that has had a heavy effect on on politics. But we can't. The folks who promote, and I want to make this a subsection of Republicans because there are. Right thinking, non authoritarian folks uh in the Republican Party, probably the majority of them, but there is this this kind of uh, they have ability. To do things that we can't do, cause we can demonize and we can call names and we can go down the low road. Uh, but if we both, if both parties do that, there's a debasement of the process. There's some level where we have to be able to respond to attacks, but we have to be above the fray. And it's really hard. I ran this against Paul Love. Paul was merciless with me, called me a thief and a liar and his assertions would hit me with like. You know, he could do his attacks, he'd get four or five of them off in a one minute forum. And it would take me twenty minutes to explain that stuff. And when you're explaining, you're losing. And so it allowed him to say the, and and, but he won all that stuff, but I executed my game. I got my message out. Directly to the voters through our media communication. And even though I got trounced in the media game twice a week, it was in the Columbia Tribune, his talking points and my. Poor attempt to refute them. And I still, I still beat him. And I would have beat him without his drunk driving two weeks before the uh election. You may remember my last election ended in his scandal. But the uh, the the the, I won the. I won the absentee vote by the same amount. So the drunk driving wasn't as big a factor as people thought it was. People were already set. People who hated me voted for Paul, people who uh, you know, didn't believe in, you know, people like me voted for me. And uh, and I won by getting that message directly out to people. So Republicans have a national, a natural advantage of being on the attack. And not really having a governance agenda. What have they passed this year? What substantive things have they done that has improved people's life? They've done nothing. They've d- disintegrated um stuff and they've they've got the popularity to show it. But we can't go down, we can't duplicate that same road. We can't have a Democrat Trump who's gonna call people names and attack. And talk at a fourth grade level and simplifies issues. But we need someone who's a masterful political commu- communicator, like a JV Pritzker. Or a Pete Buttigieg at the national level that can articulate. A progressive case in a way that means something to swing voters. And that's who we need to, you know, we can almost assume the support of the left. We need to really move that. And it's less moving positions. Because, you know, the the heart of it is, you know, Biden supported. You know, we got into supporting the status quo, which is not beneficial. We're all deteriorating in our spending power and housing has grown up a lot more expensive. And we need to actually move towards solutions that are gonna improve the material conditions uh of folks. And that's what we need to focus on. Exclusively and in totality. Um, so beyond that, you know, we shouldn't, when people throw up the divisive things like trans questions. You should answer the trans question and say, well, I support human rights for everybody. But I also believe that we need to stay focused on an economic agenda that's gonna improve people's lives. You know, when you're, cause a campaign is like a resume. I hate to even, you know, I may not vote for Ken, I'm giving him free, free, free advice. I wish Vera was here to hear it too. But uh, uh, you know, you want to talk about what you're gonna accomplish. You, when you get asked a question. At a job interview, if the, you know, if you got some criminal history and they ask you about your criminal history, you don't say, yeah, I was convicted of this. You, you. You continue on to talk about how you're not gonna be a risk to that employer. Yeah, I got that drunk driving, but I'm in recovery and now I'm doing a, you know, now I'm. A safe and person and I'm gonna be a great employee because I learned something from that terrible experience. When you get a tough question. You don't just stop there about, you know, cause they're master about working these wedge issues. Um, you know, like there's, you know, five. Five girls that were born as boys that want to play soccer in the state of Maine and they're gonna cancel all their federal funding. Um, because of that, that's a stupid wedge issue. When you get asked about stupid wedge issues. Answer the question in a humane way. We're not gonna throw our most vulnerable people under the bus because we're getting beat up. But we also want to think about how we champion that and how we move it forward. And we want to talk about concrete things that mean things that resonate with the people whose votes are gonna matter. Does that make sense? Any questions out there? Let me say hi to Mari and Al and all the other people that I see. But I haven't seen in many years. It's really good to see you.
Alice is ready with a question, I think.
All right, Alice, you got a question?
Um, I guess so. Um, but first I do want to mention, we we've been doing. What you would call direct action, these pretty successful protests every weekend. Hundred people come out, hundred and twenty, but they're mostly seniors. So that's one observation. Of course, we're retired, have a little more time. We are not drawing in, the Democrats are sponsoring it. Of course, across town, there's a Gaza demonstration usually at the same hour and that may have. The younger generation. But my question is, do we? We're looking at our strategizing this week. Do we continue with the empty chair meeting? Um, empty chair concept for our protests. Um, be, uh, but today, by the way, anyone want to go out? Alfred and Onder are supposed to be at a restaurant by Discovery Park. Um, at two fifteen, be great to have protesters. We don't know, the chamber is sponsoring it. We just got notified. No six weeks notice like our empty chair meeting. Um. Should. Should we continue with that focus? Or would there be a better direct action focus? Than our legislators who are not really coming to meet with us or responding to us, yet supporting. Except perhaps Mr. Holly right now, um, cuts to Medicaid, also supporting. The big bag beautiful bill, which by the way, includes contempt of court as being legal. I'm no longer being being something the judges can do. What should our strategy be to be more inclusive to all generations?
Well, a couple of things. You have to keep escalating, can't just can't repeat the same tactic. So.
Right.
Um, being, growing and evolving and making sure that your movement continues to grow. Cause I think practicing mass mobilizing is the most important thing local Democrats can do. Because um, when the courts get. Um, ultimately plouted and it becomes very clear that they're ignoring the will of the courts and Congress is not going to act. Then we're gonna have to, at some point, we're gonna have to mass mobilize. And that could be in a couple of months to maybe. Maybe they continue to play this cat and mouse game and ignore orders and hem and ha and drag it out. Um. And there's never this kind of ultimate point, but there may be an ultimate point where we all need to come together very quickly. So I would look at coalition building. I would look to reaching out to those other groups. You know, there's two ways to do recruiting. There are people in your individual networks. If you're mostly an older group, you gotta think about your grandkids and the younger people that you know and your neighbors and who are they involved? And making those asks. Um, if you don't have those networks anymore, then there's block recruiting where you look for those, where do those organizations go? Summer's a bad time to activate students, but are there student groups? Are there groups at the different universities that you can activate, that you can meet with, that you can, you know. Do coalition work, that you can support their other activities. Um, I think having like a pro democracy alliance meeting and pulling together all of the peop- all the. The uh activist groups, the nonprofits who have been hurt by Doge cuts. Um, and see about getting some, a bigger coalition. And coming up with some coalition level actions of what else that you can do. Um, you have to keep changing up your tactics to draw the same kind of interest, you know? Like the Markheim protests against war every, you know, Saturday, those just kind of fade out and become part of the cultural. You know, people dress as Markheim for Halloween at student parties and it just becomes lost as just part of what happens. You have to keep growing to keep the attention. And so you uh, as as, if you're still growing, keep doing what you're doing. And if you're starting to plateau. Then you want to add things that add interest, that change it up, you know, other tactics that people do are die-ins. Um, laser focus on making this Medicaid vote uh hard. You know, really getting people to push Josh Hawley to uh, you know, cause he he gets the uh. We're gonna be a working class party. We need a working class agenda. I mean, I necessarily like it. But he's the one, you know, that'll make common cause with Elizabeth Warren to do things that help consumers and uh. You know, they used to, this used to be how we did good governance. You know, we would do these right-left coalitions. That pass some stuff, so what you need to do now is try to to make this bill better or stop it.
What do you think about actually inviting Holly to talk about Medicaid specifically at real town hall? The others probably won't show up.
Yeah.
Give him a forum, even helps him, but it helps us. But every forum we've had, the legislators, our state legislators just met. And it was, the room was packed at the library, just packed, maybe also a hundred and forty. There were a hundred and forty beyond at our empty town hall and good majority of those people I'd never seen before. They saw our ads in the newspaper and are looking for something.
Yeah, the people are hungry. So you want to make sure that you're, that you're, that you're collecting contact information, that you have follow up to be able to connect them. That you have a lead in process of um, making sure that you're keeping the people that come, that that you're holding on to. Um, and uh. You, you know, that's, that's where uh. You know, that that that's, that's what you need to do is is to activate and mobilize. I mean, if you did it, I mean, man, a boy, a big successful action. If you can do it again with two hundred people, it's probably worth doing again.
Well, we might, right.
So I wouldn't be afraid to uh plan another one of those, cause that was a big win. I saw, it got regional coverage. I certainly saw a lot about it. I mean, I do keep. I'm pretty Columbia focused for hanging my hat in Leavenworth.
We, we are lucky to actually have having local reporting still. You know, we have one other thing I just want to mention, cause I heard a professor say it. Fifty percent of our US population reads at a fifth grade reading level. Twenty percent of the fifty percent reads at third grade. So they do respond to Trump. Just little sound things and Democrats tend to talk a lot.
Yeah, now I'm a, I have a section on plain language communication. Um, but yeah, he does. Trump's real gift is he's a great, he's the greatest plain language communicator in political history. Cause people talk, people read, uh, the research shows people read at four grade levels below their last um. Grade of school competed. So if you want to talk to swing voters, then you want to drop, cause they're low information, lower education levels. And those are the folks who are deciding. They don't watch the news, so making the newspaper doesn't impact them. You need to find them in your own personal relationships. Or you need to get into other media outlets and other social media that, cause they're younger, you know? So that's where you gotta get into the TikTok and Instagram and and uh, those kinds of things. Snapchat, my uh fiance tells me. So, you know, and I don't always practice what I preach. I'm a big fan of the, of big words, you know, I'm a word guy. Um, but you know, stripping it down to the barest language is an important skill and being able to to talk to people where they're at. You know, I'm talking, I know it's an educated group, so I'm talking like y'all are. And you're in other groups or you're, you want to be, you want to be simple. And straightforward and understandable and concrete. I was talking about this. Don't talk about the environment, talk about clean water, talk about, um, you know, soil. You know, those are the things that really matter, big words like environment. When I ran on sustainability, I called it a focus on the future, cause I wanted. I wanted folks like Ken to be able to vote for me, um, because they believed in sidewalks, thought I was a quality person, knew I listened. And and sustainability, what a greater way to define it than a focus on the future. And, and sustainability, what a greater way to define it than a focus on the future. Um, that we wanna take, we wanna make decisions today that are gonna have the long-term best impact on the city. And uh, boy, that could, you could, you could, you could definitely put sustainability under that umbrella.
Mike, we have quite a few questions lined up here.
Oh, let's hit them.
Let's call on Al Tacker first.
Just, just a quick note on elections. When I first ran and won a council seat in nineteen eighty-one, I didn't use the voter list at all. I knocked on every door. I won the election eight, sixty to six eighty, beating incumbent. And when I started feeling good about that, I realized I had knocked on seven thousand doors, asked seven thousand people to vote for me, and eighty-eight percent of the, of them didn't. Um, my, my question, um, you know, if one half of one percent of the people that voted in November had voted for Harris instead of uh Trump, she would've had a plurality. If two percent had vote, of Republican voters had voted for Democrats, we, in all likelihood, wouldn't win the presidency and, and at least uh the House of Representatives. Are, are you saying that by getting people engaged in local issues, uh, tha- that is a step toward convincing that very small number of people that needed to change their votes to, to vote the right way?
Yeah, exactly the case. If we can start losing these things, sixty, forty, instead of seventy, thirty, that's gonna change the state of Missouri. Um, so, if, so yeah, any marginal improvement is gonna lift that over. And some votes matter more because of the Electoral College for different races. But the House, the twenty twenty-six race is the most consequential. Well, the second ward race uh here in a couple, couple months, but uh that's some hyper-focus. Uh, but uh, but yeah, so, you know, if we can get, you know, to get the majority of the House, we're also building some long-term political future. Um, the voter registration is a good long-term, you know, turning people as, you know, people who are not registered vote have a zero percent of chance of voting for our candidate. Registered voter has about a sixty percent chance of voting. So, there is some value to talking to those folks. Um, but yeah, I think picking and picking, picking up some marginal improvement by focusing on concrete examples that actually improve the lives of working-class and struggling people. We're losing the working class, and you gotta ask why. And uh, it's because we don't have an agenda for. And what did, you know, the, the housing credit, you know, it's not gonna put more houses. It would've just uh put more people into the market, more competition. There's not enough housing stock. We need some national zoning reform, because the localities are never gonna do it. Um, and we need to, we need to build a lot more housing. And uh, and Ken, if you're looking for talking points, that would be a great one. I told the same thing uh to your opponent. Um, I think, you know, anyone who looks at the problems of Columbia and doesn't come to the conclusion that we need to get rid of the barriers to building new housing in Columbia right now in a big way, isn't taking a good look at it. And that should be what the election should be about, not some weird sideshow of uh social issues that don't really matter to people.
Mari.
Yeah, um, I, I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the fact that Scott Crystal sent out an email earlier this morning that there's going to be an actual town hall with both Onder and Alfred planned to be at Kitchen Grill and Games on Discovery Parkway today at two fifteen. So, I just wanna make sure everybody heard that, since it was just by chance I saw it in my email.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that, that had been mentioned, and we'll go through it again with the it'd be nice to know if somebody was going, but not me.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess I do have a question in that. Um, I feel like Missouri, the legislative districts, the congressional districts in Missouri have been so thoroughly gerrymandered that the chances of us being able to elect a, a Democratic representative um, in either district that's now representing part of Columbia is probably very low. So, uh, given what I see as sort of the futility of local action on that, do you have suggestions about how we can assist that effort overall in twenty twenty-six?
Um, you know, it, it has to be a building year, you know? If you're in your district, um, or the two that you've been split up into. Uh, you know, you're like the Detroit Tigers when they lost a hundred and one games that year, you know, some years ago. You have to think about building your team. You need good candidate recruitments who can build on those margins. You need to build the infrastructure of all those county party organizations. Even as you master and excel at winning all of your Boone County races, you still got one outstanding. It's a tough lift. But uh, that should be your natural focus. And once you get beyond that, you wanna support the other county party organizations who have a lot less capacity to kinda help them grow through your natural networks, so that we can whip forty percent instead of thirty percent. Um, and then we can also build the infrastructure to be competitive. Um, you know, not being, we're not gonna get to address redistricting, and it probably won't go in our favor, so we're always gonna have to fight that. But we're gonna have to win one, you know? Finding the most winnable one, or the least unwinnable one, and focusing our efforts in a way that builds for the long term. One of the reasons we don't make any progress is we pull together, we're always focused on the next election, is we pull together and we put all of our resources into the election, and then we get, we win, lose, or draw. And then we take a breath, and we rest, and then we gear up, and we do it again. And then, I, instead, we wanna iteratively improve. We wanna hold on. We wanna, instead of whack-a-mole, treating elections like the game of whack-a-mole, where we're swinging at this election, now we're swinging at this election, now we're swinging at this election. We wanna move forward, hold that, and then reach back and move forward again, like a ratchet. Where we incrementally improve our processes, our techniques, the number of people that we have involved, our onboarding procedures, our organizational strength, so that we have greater and greater capacity to become competitive in more and more places. Maybe we focus on county commission races in those other counties. Um, you know, it's uh, you know, it's, it's, it's really unique to based on what you have to offer and how you wanna give back, because there's lots of ways to do it. And there's obviously some success, because, you know, Boone County's pretty blue. And uh, because of the good work that you all and, and folks like you are doing.
Speaking of good folks, Dave Mallory with our last question for today's discussion.
Thanks. Mine's not so much a question, as a response or an attaboy to Alice Turner on bringing up the two town halls we've had, and expressed my concerns. One, I went to the one this week. I thought it was wonderful, because it was controlled. Questions were written down and sent in, and each, and the moderator passed that on to specific representatives. I was disappointed that the guy, the Republican, the one Republican wasn't there. I don't even know, they didn't say whether he was invited or not, or was it supposed to be just a Democratic town hall? Where, on the other side, the, the empty chair forum. If I was Republican, I wouldn't come to things like that, where people are screaming at me, and that's most of what I see on YouTube. Here we have this town hall, and whoever had it, if it's not controlled, well, yeah, you're just scaring, you know, why would they come to something like that, where people's gonna scream at them? That's, that to me is just not, like Dave's mentioned here, show up to this afternoon, show up and be loud. No, you wanna show up, a town, a town hall is, should be for sharing ideas, should, letting them know what we, we think is important. And if they hold a town hall, or any politician holds a town hall meeting, and it's just their side, that's a waste of time too. But this, that's all show up, so you can be shout the loudest. That, that to me just, is not a good way to hold, to do things.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure. Uh, I see it's one o'clock, so I feel like uh, I agree with that, and I'll just make another shameless plug. Uh, if you wanna buy a book, please preorder the book, and the publisher will get it to you shortly. Um, if you wanna go to the New American Community website, there's lots of great stuff. If you like what we're doing, I'm gonna be doing some fundraising, so you might hear from me as I get to do some old-fashioned uh dialing for dollars to kinda get us through this gap. It's a tough time for democratic fundraising. And uh, so, if you can make a contribution, I'd sure appreciate it. It might get you, uh, boy, I wish I had a cold beverage in a can, and I'd be showing off my uh, uh, I'm gonna quit drinking when I get like, when I'm appointed Secretary of State koozie. But you can get, uh, you can get a koozie for making a donation. Uh, I'll look for Columbia donations and remember that I promised that. And uh, and get back to you. But I really appreciate you. I appreciate you, the hard work of what the Mule Skinner's does. It's a great community service. And I uh, I, it helped me as a nonpartisan person to, to uh, a- advance my political agenda. And, and I hope it's been good, good for you all, and, and I think you're all admirable people. I'm glad we have a long history. And I hope I get to come back and, and talk about um, even greater things that we're all doing together.
Thank you so much, Mike.
I have a question about ordering your book for the public library. So, should I wait a little bit before I put the request in? Cuz they may not be able to find it, or?
Um, yeah, uh, I'm not sure uh, how that works. Uh, I need to have.
Well, they would go, they would go to the publisher, and they ask where you heard about it, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think if you include the link, you could, you could make that request now.
Yes, I, I would give it.